All right, I'd like to call this April 3rd, 2014 Cookville City Council meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright, here. All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, do we have additions or subtractions from the agenda?
We need to add item 14, consider approval of change order for the surface transportation program paving project. Sponsor is Greg Brown.
Okay. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, jump to item two. Receive update on the Cookville Unplug Program. Sponsor is Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and councils, it's with pleasure that I get to make this update to you tonight on our Cookville Unplug Program. Connie has been after me for months to do this, and we finally got it all together. Just a brief history to jog your memory. If you recall, back in November of 2010, the city partnered with Cummins Filtration. And what Cummins wanted to do is come in and let us take advantage of a program that they had won a national award for, and it was training energy leaders in our facilities to reduce energy costs, electric and gas. In the first quarter of 2011, we kicked off our Unplug Program by, we first started doing the energy audits, getting TVA to come in and do energy audits on all of our city facilities, and looking for all kinds of low-cost, no-cost ways to save energy. Then just point out to you that, to this day, we continue to meet with some of these folks and others, and share all kinds of energy efficiency ideas on a monthly basis. Next slide here. I didn't list all the accomplishments in 2013, but I did want to point out some that we've taken advantage of. One of those involves several of the utilities and leisure services. We replaced a lot of metal halide lighting that was in the warehousing areas and in the gymnasiums with fluorescent lighting. It is a better lighting, and the energy usage is about anywhere between a third and a half what the metal halide is. So we've been able to save quite a bit of money there. Plus, we were able to run it through a TVA program that allowed us to get incentive money for doing that, you know, through $4,000 at each of the places. Additionally, we replaced quite a bit of lighting in the public works facility as it was being built with energy efficiency fixtures. We haven't got Greg his incentive money yet, but that's coming. And we used LED lighting in the parking lot. If you guys have been by there at night, it is amazing what that looks like. And just so happens, we're going to be using LED lighting in all the business park as well. Another thing we did is we started, as I just mentioned, the installation of LED lighting in Highland's Business Park. We additionally had an employee appreciation at an Earth Day celebration last year on April 22nd. And with Jim and the council's approval, we plan to have one again this April 22nd. I hope we can have as pretty a weather as we had then. And the city of Cookville, with lots of folks' help, received gold status certification from the Tennessee Valley Sustainable Communities Program that Melinda has told you about. Now to the fun stuff. We use utility tracking software on all of our facilities that we monitor for their gas usage and electric usage. And you can see that the city facility electric and gas usage savings for this past calendar year 2013 was $61,503. The LED parking lot lighting that we've been doing for the last year or two results in about $11,250 annual savings. And when you save the kilowatt-hours on the electricity, you additionally save some kilowatt demand reduction. So we've calculated that, and we feel really comfortable that the city has saved about almost $80,000 this past calendar year. And the final slide, this one is to share with you some of the goals that we've set for 2014. We have a website. We haven't done a really good job of upkeeping that, but we plan on doing quite a bit to enhance that website. We plan to hold a second annual employee appreciation luncheon. We want to continue to submit energy efficiency projects to the city manager for his approval, and we give him the payback on those, the cost, payback, and those kind of things. At Connie's insistence, we need to develop energy efficiency material procurement policy for the council approval. That's when people buy heat pumps, when people buy lighting products, those kind of things. We've got a standard to go by that we're buying something very energy efficient. Also, Connie and Ronnie are working on a water conservation plan, is my understanding. We additionally want to pursue energy efficiency grants that are available, and hoping to have a solar installation either in Dogwood Park or the new business park, or somewhere you guys choose. We want to continue to seek energy efficiency advice on all city facility projects. As I mentioned earlier, we did that with the public works facility. We incorporated, we had TVA come up, do an audit. We incorporated quite a few energy efficiency things out there. When Randy did the shooting range house, we had TVA come in and make all kinds of suggestions there as well. So we just want to, any facility project, we want to incorporate as many energy efficiency items as we possibly can. As I mentioned earlier, we want to continue to utilize the software that tracks all the electricity and gas usages in all the facilities, so we know what's going on. And something a little bit new this year, for years we've talked about, well, since its inception back in 2011, we've talked about what can we do to roll this out in some way to the community. We wanted to wait until we felt we had our house in order, if you will, before we did that. But we're going to work with TVA to provide some hands-on workshops out in the community, probably this fall, teach people hands-on, again, how to caulk and sweater strip and some of those kind of things. That's basically my presentation. I would try to answer any questions that you might have. Applause.
Good job.
I do want to take this opportunity, we've got a group sitting here in the front row, most of them have white, all of these have white shirts on. These are some of our energy leaders. We have around 20. So it's pretty good to get this many folks out on a Thursday night. But I'd like for them to stand if they would and be recognized. And Connie, if you would stand too. Jeff Mills, where are you?
Where's Jeff at?
You guys look very energy efficient.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peak, I did have one question.
Okay.
Do you have any idea of the approximate amount of money we've saved since we've started this project in total?
I don't know the exact amount, mayor, but I think in 2011 it was around $70,000. So I'm guessing we're over $200,000.
That's good.
Good job.
And the upfront cost, I mean, after those savings that we're having now and forever are going to really eat up that upfront cost that we go through when you have to go out and buy some of these more expensive, energy-efficient things.
Yeah.
Time is, the neat thing about this is time is on our side, the way I understand it. Is that right?
It is.
As we continue with these savings, it's just going to help eat up that upfront cost we did.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, being able to get TVA incentive money really reduces your payback. I know on some of the warehousing projects where we changed from metal halide to fluorescent, we had some payback periods that were less than a year.
Oh, my.
That's cool.
I love it.
Good job, guys. Good job, everybody. We appreciate it, we do. And taxpayers appreciate it, too.
Yeah.
All right, on to old business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on March 20th, 2014. Have a motion.
No, 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 you got to stay.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. On to the consent agenda. Item four, set a date, May 1st, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140403, establishing zoning for the Old Stewart Road annexation area. Item five, set a date, May 1st, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140404, closure and abandonment of a portion of Holly Avenue and declaring it a surplus. Item six, set a date, May 1st, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140405, amendments to the zoning code. And item seven, consider awarding bid for transformers from the electric department. I have a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote.
I have a question. I guess on the, can we go back to the screen?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, I believe, on number four. I'm Boyd Klein.
On number four, it has been established by council that only the people in the immediate neighborhood will benefit to be able to vote on this agenda.
That's not established by the council, that's state law.
That's state law? Only them?
You have to be a resident of the property.
Okay. So the rest of the citizens, even though as taxpayers we're going to be affected, have no voice on that vote? We cannot have, right?
They're not being annexed.
Right. So therefore, that's the rule.
Right. I mean, that makes sense to me, if you're not being annexed.
Well, in a sense, it does to you, but it doesn't to me. Because the people that are being annexed are certainly going to vote for a garbage pickup, okay? But the rest of us that pay taxes may not want that to take place until we know that Victor is coming in. I say, we don't spend any money. Let these three guys out there in the county that's going to make a million or $2, let them pay the whole cost on the front end. If Victor comes in, then that supports all these small, your Highland Rim or whatever that project is called, that would support that very well. But why should we, as taxpayers, spend money for this annexation, not one dime, okay? Until after the annexation is agreed upon by Victor? I don't think the taxpayers should stand for it. That's all I'll say on it. And think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Consider reappointment to the Cookville Historic Zoning Commission. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and councilmembers, the term of Chris Wakefield for service on Historic Zoning Commission expires this month. This is a five-year term. Chris serves as the planning commission representative on the Historic Zoning Commission. He's also a resident in one of our Historic Zoning Districts. He's been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we would recommend for his reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
We're always grateful when people are willing to serve, and Mr. Wakefield has been a, I sit with him on the Historic Zoning Commission. He's been a very diligent and conscientious member. Appreciate it.
I agree with that. I served with him on the planning commission. He's a hard worker.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item nine, consider awarding bid for landscape maintenance. Public Works Department sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently received bids for the maintenance of the median at the Highland's Business Park. It's just the strip of grass and trees and beds that we have in the, between the two lanes, it's not outside the curbs. We had several bids, the low bid at $375 a trip. They're to maintain that every two weeks. So that'll be about $5,600 for the whole year. They'll start April 14th and end October 31st. So I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have a motion for approval?
I'd like to move that we accept, that we accept this bid and the second, the next lowest bid, just in case things don't work out. And that wasn't well said.
Would you like to make an amendment?
No, no, I'm making a motion. My motion's including that.
Okay.
Okay, the motion says that we accept this bid, I mean, go with this bid, and then also that the next lowest bid, in case this doesn't work out.
Lee Martin Law Care. Correct?
Yes.
Very good.
Second.
Questions, comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Klein.
I say stick with 375, forget the 8. And then if it does fall apart, we can then take another look at the dollars. But there's a big spread between 375 and $800.
There's a reason why we did that.
Right.
Because this way, first of all, we don't even have to bring this to council because it's under $10,000. And second of all, this way, Mr. Brown can conduct his business without having to come back to council. If something happens.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 10, consider awarding bid for 30-yard recycling containers. Public Works Department, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently received bids for two recycling containers. The low bid for both containers at $11,576 by Becker's Waste is a good bid. I would recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Brown, you were talking about the fact that you, our recycling bins get filled up a lot, fast, quickly.
And they take a lot of abuse, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, these particular ones are by the Justice Center or behind?
These will be the ones replaced at the Justice Center, that's correct.
They're pretty worn out.
Yeah.
He'll be replacing the ones at Deco Quarry and, is that the city or is that the county?
That's county.
Still, there's a lot of these recycling bins that need to be replaced. We recycle and I go to different places and they, they get a lot of use. That's a good thing.
It is a good thing, yeah.
It's a great problem to have, so I'm very appreciative of us being able, position we can buy these.
Have you used this company before?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. Item 11, consider approval of emergency purchase of replacement pump for the Booger Swamp Pumping Station. Water Quality Control Department sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we've got a, one of the small pumps, it's not, it's 1,200 gallon a minute pump, that we needed to replace out at the Booger Swamp Pump Station. It's a sole source. We had contacted Guthrie Sales and Service, and the pump, we need to pay that invoice on that pump, and would ask your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? None? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 12, consider awarding bid for Booger Swamp Sewer Pumping Station and force main improvement. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we bid out a project that was, we included in our budget this year, and we're going to do some rehab on that. It's, I think the station was built in about 1985 or so. I just got a couple of quick pictures. We sort of went over that the last time we talked about it. But we have open bids on that project now. J. Combi Construction was the low bidder, $289,000, and we'd recommend a low bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 13, consider awarding bid for sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we are doing manholes just rehab in our infrastructure every year. I think we've probably done some of these with you guys before. This is the area of the manholes we're doing this time. We've probably, I think I've shown you these photos where they go in, spray epoxy, and rehab the manhole. And we've opened those bids. CTR coatings, $132,000, $70 is the low bidder, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Kelly, how does that affect traffic and stuff? When do you, do you just block it off long enough?
They block it off and have flackers around, get them around.
Okay.
Has CTR, have you done business with them?
Yeah, I think we've done business with those before. I know we've bid so many of these, I can't keep half of them straight.
I'm sure.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Kelly. On to item 14. We added to the agenda. Consider approval of change order for the STP paving project. Sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, Jackson Street is one of the streets that we're paving as part of this project. There's four locations on there that water, groundwater seeps through, some cracks in asphalt. In the wintertime, it ices over some, but it also helps to speed up the deterioration of the pavement. So before we paved it, we thought it might be a good idea to add some under drains to get rid of that water. We got a price from the contractor, Highways Incorporated. T-Dot reviewed their prices and agreed it was a fair price. The amount for adding the under drains and laterals was $11,415.75. I recommend approving that for the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, if you would, please. Greg, I just, you know, now that it's starting to warm up a little bit, I know you guys are really ramping up, trying to get busy, because a lot of the roads have just really gotten, just beat up this winter. In your estimation, I'd like to hear, your estimation, how have we fared this winter with our roads? I mean, it seems like it's been, it's been pretty tough.
Some of the older roads are in worse shape than the ones that have been paved recently, but it's probably a little worse than some of the other winters. But some of the roads are in bad shape, we're going to be paving this, within the next year, so we should take care of that.
Neil Street, we drive on Neil Street quite a bit, and I appreciate that getting done. Does this, has, have you had, you know, one thing I really appreciate about your public works department is you have this nice, nice plan in place. You look at the roads, you give them a grade, you give them a grade, you determine usage and how fast it deteriorates and how you need to. Did that plan change much after this winter at all?
Well, we haven't reevaluated it yet, but we'll, we'll look at it. We have a list of roads that needed it from last fall, so I know, I'm sure they need it more now. But when we get those done, we'll look at it, and we may have to switch some around for this next year.
Yeah, and I was just curious about those. I mean, we had that, we had that plan in place, and I'm wondering with the winter going on, if it, which it being so cold and so long, that if we're going to have to reprioritize that. And I guess, it sounds like you guys are getting ready to get on that, so I just was curious, just want to hear you, hear you say something about that.
Now, Greg, on this change order, was this area where it's being affected, have we, the city had problems with that area before?
Well, the pavement, that's where those seams, when they paved it, that's where it's coming out. It's not really, the asphalt wasn't really pothole in there or anything like that, but sometimes in the winter it would ice over when it was the groundwater.
So it had black ice?
Yeah. So while we were paving it to keep it from happening in the future again, we thought we'd go ahead and do that.
So on Chestnut Street is a question. Where was that to be done?
Jackson.
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 Yes, sir.
Busy road.
It's a very busy road. Neil Street is, too. All right.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, this is portion of the meeting. We open up the floor to a hearing of citizens and/or delegations. If anybody wants to come forward, or anything from the council?
I want to remind everybody that this Saturday, it's Doga Pulusa in Dogwood Park, and it's time to bring your dog out for all sorts of fun events. And I think they're going to have contests and booths, and I believe it's from 12 to 4, 1 to 4, 1 to 4. And it's always a fun time. Lots of people come out, so it's free. It's free to the public, so be sure to get out and enjoy this good weather.
Right.
Well, it won't be good weather tonight. Saturday it will be.
Yes, sir.
Okay, one more thing on the annexation. I'm going to take a hard look legally, regardless of what the politics is here. I'm going to take a hard look on behalf of taxpayers, not putting up a dime for this project, until we know what Victor is going to do. So just know for sure, that's my plan. I'm just being honest with you. A lot of people do not want to spend money out there without knowing if this polecat really is going to come in or not. And I think that the citizens deserve that consideration. And not just to look at the few people that are out there that are going to have their garbage picked up, they've got no reason not to vote. But as taxpayers, we're going to have to afford it. Even if we decide later, as James Mills said and Shipley said last week or two weeks ago, we have under the law the legal right to de-annex. Okay? We have the right to de-annex. But you know, we're not going to want a de-annex, because we're going to have a cost on the front end going into that. And I really would like you to think about a hard conversation in your back room of how you might approach it different. Because if you don't, then I'm going to figure out a way to at least force your hand to take a hard look at it as councilman, as attorney, and as planning director. Thank you.
Thank you. I can tell you this, I mean, we're not spending any money on this annexation, other than some road improvements that need to be done anyway. And then, this, of course, it will not be free trash pickup. If we annex these people in, they will be paying taxes. So they will be paying for that. So...
Well, James last week mentioned there would be a fee to start into this project, so I'm basing it on what he said two weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Klein. I mean, it's a, and the reason I appreciate it is because these comments have been, your comments that you're making have been addressed since this, since way before this project even got started, when it was in its, when it was in its infancy and its creation, in its creation state. I can give you a heads up where I stand. I mean, I've been for this ever since the beginning. As most of you know, I sat on the county commission, and there was a lot of, a lot of people that did not want this project to happen. And this is just your, your thoughts are really nothing new that I've heard. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of folks out there that didn't want this project to happen. They put all kinds of hurdles up to let the process, to stop the process. I, however, have not been one of those folks to stop the process. The, I think Cookville and Putnam County has positioned itself in such a way that when other communities tuck-tailed during the recession, tuck-tailed during the recession and decided that they could not demonstrate to the business community, when it came, when we came back, when that business community came back after the recession, that this place was prepared. And I think Cookville and Putnam County, the folks that did the voting, the leaders of this community that the public had voted for, said that, "We're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to take our, we're going to take a chance." Not a chance. "We're going, we're going to make, we're going to sell Cookville, because it's a great place." And I just don't, I don't really, I appreciate what you said, and I do really, truly respect your opinion, because I've heard that for a lot, but I, I've, just don't, I don't agree, don't agree with your position on that. We're going to go ahead, we're going to get this, we're going to get this project, okay? And it's going to be, once we get this project, it's going to be, the benefit, the direct benefit's going to be huge, and the indirect benefit's even going to be better. So, and if, and you know, guess, guess what? If Victor doesn't come around, it's okay, someone else will. Because I tell you what, I have, I just feel that, I have that much confidence in what Cookville and Putnam County has to offer. Cookeville and Putnam County has to offer.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a couple of announcements to make. Cookeville History Museum, May the 10th is going to have a story festival, a storytelling festival. Admission is free. It's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it sounds like it's going to be very, very good. The Cookeville Depot Museum is doing, every Friday morning at 10:30, they're having, it's Train Tales, and this is for preschoolers, and admission is free on that, too. So if you, if you have any preschoolers, take them over to the depot, 10:30 every Friday morning.
Does that mean we can't come?
No, you can go, too.
You gotta have a kid. You know, that's a story fest. We've been to the Jonesboro, we've been to that Jonesboro Storytelling Festival, and that's, it's wonderful, and these folks are headliners.
And there's one coming from there that, I mean, that appears there all the time.
That's wonderful. I heard, we heard about that, and I think it's wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Larry, I also appreciate your position. However, if you were to send a vote out to our community through the Herald Citizen for a yes or no vote, I will guarantee you, it'll go down. Now, you are representing us, all right?
Yes, sir.
You need to hear that. And when you represent us, it doesn't matter what you think, in my opinion. It matters what the community thinks. And that's who you represent. You need to think about that. Because politicians move from this area to looking at Cookeville as the right thing to do, over prudence to what the community might want. And you need to think about that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll leave it on this. Mr. Klein, I would, I will respectfully disagree with you. I think if we, if we threw it out there to the folks, would you want us to do everything we possibly can to improve our area and bring as many jobs and opportunities as possible? I think it'd be an overwhelming yes. I really do. So I kind of, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, and I know you've probably heard from several folks, I understand that.